My bike up here. My bicycle, I put on my backpack, my baseball cap, and I got on my bicycle and I'm better than school. Freaked you down when I said, oh, you're gonna use this.
Wait till the snow pop. Yeah. At least we don't have girls going to state. That'd be terrible.
Is it gonna snow or is it raining right now?
Oh, it's supposed to change, but the big thing is the wind and, you know, it's just gonna be.
It's not as bright as that.
Right.
Hallie's already opening up a sneak in extra day for spring break. Look at the weather.
I know they're talking to you, but no where. I'm surprised.
Yeah. Yeah, who knows, it's Spartan Houghton, might be just a windy day too. So. They've been wrong before.
It's all practice. We were talking about here. She screws up every second the sunshine.
I did. Hurry, anyway, suffer. And I said, yeah, I slept in the vent for the fellas. Through the light. They slept with us in the bed. We got on the road to take them.
I was like person, person was one of the first. I think maybe these are not too big, like two of these gyms, because they're the whole, the men are.
Yep.
They're still only size, Winer had one too.
Winer's court's actually bigger than standard.
Yeah.
I hate the one.
Yes, he is. And they have two, you know, two that they put that part down.
Person has a third gym. Well, actually, I picked it back. They still didn't have the two, because the third one. All of the out homes, the ones that are not.
Oh.
But it's only for them.
Sure. That was in that one room, but with the alarm or.
Out, something like that, yes. But that gym is cool because the kitchen for the grade school is full, so it's hard. It's before the bounce.
I'd say.
That's a good.
Okay, I've got seven o'clock, well, I'll probably start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In due course, while we're in Spanish, one nation, under God, in the Israel, with liberty and justice. All right, we'll start with the first order of business, which is approval of the minutes from the meeting held February tenth.
You can.
No.
I'll say.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, our persons wishing to address the school board who are not on the agenda. Okay, saying none, our next item is approval of the agenda. And I assume we have no change.
There was a change except for maybe on your old one that for whatever reason, Germans don't allow this as well.
Sure. Okay, just need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second, okay. You got a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Are there any new conflict of interest disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I do have one question on the consent agenda, um, we've got a lot of kindergartners in the, in the student report. Do we ever track the number of families who send their kids to kindergarten at Dell's and then don't continue on? I mean, do we know that number, are, do we have an issue? It's.
It's ironic to bring it up, because we just had that conversation today.
Okay.
Um, we, there, there's not, not that I know of.
Sure.
I'm sure we can go back and look, because we kind of talked about that a little bit, and.
Yeah.
Trying to kind of see what, where that goes.
Right.
Um, so we've kind of been talking about all of that, but no, not that I know of.
Well, I assume it's because we've just had kindergarten roundup, and so therefore you've got all the old enrollments, but.
Now, a number of these help siblings.
Sure, yeah.
That's pretty, that's pretty, as a matter of fact, about eight to eleven siblings.
Right, well, it's just something that I think that it's important to keep track of.
I totally agree.
Because, yeah, I mean, if we've got outside communities taking advantage of our kid prep program, I mean, we're incurring.
Totally agree, just had that conversation some more.
Perfect, well.
You're on.
And we didn't even talk.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
I had an adjacent question, so is that, that enrollments this month are, are a function of, you get the kindergarten roundup, and then these other schools, they just don't offer kid prep there?
Um, some, some do, some don't.
Some are just, they have siblings in the school districts.
A lot of them have siblings in the, in the districts, so a lot of them. Use our kid prep to go to different schools.
Well, and if you want to blow your mind, look at our district map sometime, I mean, it's really wonky.
I know.
And so there, I mean, we get a fair amount of open enrollment, that, the bus is driving right past the place.
Right.
You know, so they, they're technically in a different district.
Actually, to the north one, it's just, like, our district is kind of up there, and it's closer to here than it is maybe.
Yep.
Flanders, for example.
Yep.
Lot of proximity, but.
Like in and around Trenton.
Right.
Yeah, Trenton is Flanders.
District, yes.
Right, but then we drive through and then it's Dell's again.
We have.
Right.
I would say it's an uncommon number for ours.
Sure, I just noticed there's a bunch of kindergartners on there, so that kind of made me think that, I don't know if we've ever really looked into that.
Yeah.
To make sure that we're not.
Totally agree.
Yeah. So.
There'll be some other things that we have to, to even cover that.
Sure.
I just had one other question too, uh, a general question about personnel report, we have a name in both the hiring and the terminations columns, I just did. Somebody showed up in there, or somebody applied and then showed that.
We never showed up.
Gosh, that's what I figured, I just.
Yours, wow.
Curious. Okay, is there anything else?
I'm in second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next agenda item, old business, strategic planning update.
So, a couple things on this, do you guys want to give a brief overview of just the, the general focus group? What thoughts on that?
Sure. Um, we have Tom Oster, and he came and met with a group of the teachers and staff, um, and then Karen and I were both there as well. And they put together kind of some goals for us based off of what the results were. Um, and then we kind of gave feedback regarding like what we thought maybe were something that we could look at doing or implementing to try to help achieve those goals. Um, so the next step will be that it'll go to the, to the public, um, and we'll have that open forum, um, and they'll kind of do the exact same process as what we did, but they'll be able to see what our responses were in that, and then they'll be able to add to it or recommend modifications and that kind of thing. And then once all of that's done, Tom will take it back and we may kind of finalize the goals, and then we'll, we'll go through that together. It was a good session, I thought there was a lot of good feedback. And I thought, from some of the things that we have gathered, I, I felt like the goals were really in line with, um, what, what the results were. Um, but overall, overall, really good feedback, honestly, too.
The goals from the teacher's group were all right?
Yep, everything that he went through, all with like every, he went through the student, um, surveys, he went through the staff surveys, the community surveys, he kind of gave us, um, a, a report of everything. And then the recommended goals based off of that. And, but I felt like they were, they were pretty in line with what I expected to see, I guess. And I think the goals seem um, um, doable, probably, I mean, some of them may be a bit of a challenge, but things that we need to talk about anyways, on the road. It'll be good to get community feedback, I sometimes want that, do you have anything else that you'd like? To add, yeah, it was a really good meeting.
And the teacher's feedback and what was presented, how does that, what did that feel like?
I thought it was positive, I mean, there was, there was some things that the teachers obviously, um, would like to see done, you know, and, and poised that, um, but, and then we talked about, what are some of the ways we can do, you know, accomplish some of those goals and stuff, so, um, we all just threw out ideas from different work groups, um, and kind of put them up on a board. Um, we talked through them, and then, and anybody else could give additional feedback, uh, based off of my suggestions, and then, um, once we were finished with kind of the first goal, we moved to the second goal, went through all the different goals, um, and so that'll all be taken now to the outside focus group. We can look at all of that as a whole as well, and after. Am I missing anything?
No, great, Karen, did you have any feedback?
No, I don't think you have any.
Yeah, so I think he calls on, so we have those four goals, and then I think the, the ones that are interaction steps.
Yeah, yeah.
So we need, we need actions that the group wanted to have, be having in there. We might email you guys all that updated, that updated sheet, similar process, the external group, but not that. Um, do you want to talk briefly about how you'd like to see the external group go and just talk it through, please?
Yeah, so, just, no real change to, to have a process that's been deducted so far, other than we're going to make sure that everyone's invited, the whole community, so, so Angie's gonna put together a, an invitation, or, sorry. Karen.
No, come to like I am.
Karen's gonna put together the invitation, uh, and then let me follow up with, I don't know how, the best way to track that, since we need kind of hard numbers.
Do you want to event, like RSVP?
I don't, we haven't really chatted about the process too much, I don't know if we can start with a Facebook, maybe a signup thing, maybe.
If we do it somewhere, it's like how we did the town hall, we're able to blow an RSVP so that we know as far as like location, how much space we need. Um, I thought the responses that we got for that were pretty accurate, um, but I do think that in addition to, you know, publicly putting it out there, if we put it on the school, the district's Facebook page, and creating an event or whatever, I would like to see each of us in personally invite, like, say, five people that we think would be really good voices. Um, people that are engaged in the school, and, you know, engage with their kids, so that we make sure that we have, you know, those people that we can count on to be here as well. And I think that'll give us a good mix that way.
That's a great. Will they sign up through, you want us to do a sign up through the school or a sign up through the group?
I don't know, we could, um, the whole Facebook, that creates the event, and making an RSVP through that, and then we can all share it and everything, that might be easier to keep it all.
We may go up this work for future on how you want it worded, and then you'll go through. We'll, we'll create something so it comes through, also just so we don't have to.
Gotcha.
So it'll be on the district, district Facebook page, but then it also just be like a, you know, something on the district site.
Yeah.
Page, do, and he go to Facebook and.
Yeah, we can figure it out.
Or something, just try to put it wherever we can.
And Jeff already built it on the landing page, right, so. It was good, yeah, so we should be able to base up that.
Sure.
And maybe we send out an email like a week before, or whatever, whenever you need a hard number, a few days before that, I'll, uh.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't expect to see numerous numbers, but I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to be here, uh. And then once we get those numbers, we just talk to Tom. See what he wants to handle.
I'll sort of do, you get that, you get that half line out, yeah, and for Jeff, you do already, right? That's March thirty first, at six five.
And locations will be dependent on.
Right, one likely, we'll try to have it here depending, we have thirty, we have eight, it was. Because we'll just have to go from there, it's. We have to hear that now.
So how many people are we shooting for? I mean, what, what, what's?
I anticipate the high number being forty, that sort of seems to be like the top end of participation in Delaware Rapids, which is right on target.
Sure.
One percent penetration, uh.
He said he could manhandle it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we, I just don't, I mean, that's about what we have at the town hall during. That's what I was at the Chamber of Bingo last night, this is kind of the number for Delaware Rapids.
I didn't know if you were shooting for a hundred people or.
No, no, I just want to make sure that it, it doesn't seem like it's anybody.
Right, yeah.
Because we might not, we might not know individually that person feels like they want to come, so.
Right.
Let's try to get it poured out.
Well, yeah, I don't anticipate a huge number though.
Yeah, that is, I will, I'll grab a few of you here.
Do we have a date in?
It's March thirty first.
It's at six P M. About to RSVP, probably six eight.
And this is going to be the Strategic Planning Committee being there?
No, this, this.
Okay.
Karen, is it the internal one?
Sure.
We're gonna go to this next one.
Okay.
Unless you want to.
No, I was just kind of. Okay, is that all on strategic planning?
Yeah.
Okay, then we will move on to new business, first order of new business is the Board Equalization appointment.
Yeah, so on Tuesday, March nineteenth, at seven o'clock, the, uh, the Board Equalization needs a member from our board to join them at every meeting or a hearing to, uh, for real property assessment. Um, so we need to nominate somebody to go, uh, last year it was Troy. So, I'm gonna hold on you now.
No.
Somebody who lives in town.
Oh, okay.
You're just making that up if you don't.
That's what we always did, had something.
So, yeah, you guys.
It's the city appointment.
Yep.
Yeah, see, we have township appointments out in the country too, so.
So they just need to want somebody from our board.
This is the city hall, but this is a county.
This is at, uh, City Council Chambers.
Into.
Yep.
It's basically if somebody wants to complain about their property taxes, they go in front of the city council, and since we're, uh, of taxing interest of the city, we are entitled to have a representative there to basically deem whether somebody's property taxes should be lowered, or, you know, they're, they shouldn't be contested, so.
It's Tuesday, March nineteenth, at seven o'clock.
As far as the discussion goes, I have to negate myself, because I'll be traveling back from Aberdeen, and we have a post prom meeting at that same time, not in Aberdeen.
So yours, uh.
I nominate Jason. I would say if Jason's willing to go, I would be happy to say that nomination.
I think I just got.
Not my area of expertise.
We don't need a motion.
I should be asked.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to nominate Jason.
You will be able.
Charge of double. And we'll two times zero, it doesn't.
So there's been a motion and a second to approve Jason as our representative, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Congratulations, Jason.
If you don't even oppose it for yourself, then that might be a lifetime point.
I'm expecting another certificate of achievement.
Okay, next agenda item is the twenty twenty five School Board Election Update.
Do you want to be glad?
Yeah, the update is we received both of our comments petitions back, they are accurate, and that is the only one to receive, so there is no election.
So we got a motion, so we do hear your motion, so.
Yeah, there's.
Yes, we do not need a motion.
No.
Okay, next agenda item is the driver's ed, summer fee for twenty twenty five.
Okay, so what our goal is here, we have to approve, uh, education fees and wages, and my understanding is that we're not changing any of those on graduate or chartering. So they could stay the same unless you guys would like to, you know, change this, but, um, districts, we're, we're not changing the price for the kids, I guess. The drivers instructor, that's up to you guys to watch. Students is two hundred and fifty dollars, out of district students is two hundred and seventy five dollars, we get in district preference first before it gets full. Driver instructors, thirty five, or chuckle time, plus a fifty for driving, so we would need, uh, either shortcut discussion or questions, uh, probably interfere with those.
Just wondering, either of you have recommendations? What were they?
Uh, we're not changing the fees, so I'll say the same. And how long have you been at this, don't know?
Um, it's very fair, it's fair rate, I would say.
Did you change it?
They want to get not changed. It's one of those things, we, it's a separate fund, so we change it as we need to, basically, if the cost of instruction goes up, I think after the Blue Ribbon Panel where teachers got big raises approaches, we raised it up quite a bit then, um, but, yeah, it, it stays pretty steady, you know, because it's all number of kids that participate, and then it pays out, and I would think.
Our costs is.
Right.
Now, you've got a huge population in two.
Right. It's one of those things, we, we change it if we need to, but we still have to approve it every year, so.
If the instructors, that's market competitive. Many, it's, uh, competitive for what we pay like hourly in summertime, we're not over.
Okay.
Other, other is.
And the biggest thing is finding instructors is more based on whether people are willing to do it, it's, I mean, you can throw money at a problem like that, but if you don't have people willing to do it, you can double their pay, and you probably still aren't going to get more volunteers, so.
We need to raise it. Right.
All right, well, with that, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the education fees and wages regarding that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the fees, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion passes, next agenda item is the FFA summer trip.
Okay, so all our FFA students in the summertime, they are headed to Cody, Wyoming, Saturday, June twenty first, Tuesday, June twenty fourth. Traditionally, we, uh, approve that trip here at the board level, I think mostly, uh, for like insurance purposes, um, and just so you guys know, as long as they're not traveling out of the country, that's not something we have to do, uh, but we're stating the tradition, just want to make sure you guys are aware. Approve that trip, uh, at the means of, it's a global summer.
It's a rodeo over there.
There's a rodeo there every day, so. Yeah, there's a rodeo there every day in Cody, so it's, yeah, I mean, it. Yeah. And the FFA has deep enough pockets to do it, so.
I'm motion, do you approve?
I'll second. Okay, motion's been made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes, next agenda item is the Superintendent Record.
So just to give you a, a little update on where we're at, and here, another week to go, and we start getting the nuts and bolts when it comes to school funding. We'll start looking at, uh, what the increase really is going to be, uh, the Governor's Bill two sixteen, it was, it actually was defeated and then reconsidered, and then there were some motions, of course, with amendments on it today, so we're not sure where, really where that is. We want to be trapped with three different property tax bills, none of them possible for schools, uh, it's HB twelve thirty five, SB one ninety one, and this, the Governor's Bill is, uh, sent to two sixteen. Uh, they all have different moving parts when it comes to what they want to do with, uh, property taxes. Most of them are some sort of freeze at like two percent instead of the normal, well, three percent that we're supposed to get on New Grove, and then the dollar amount that they put in place after two thousand sixteen, but, um, but anything else, I think it comes down to, if they don't, if they do that, where they're going to dollars. You, you have to be able to generate revenue somehow, and that's how we generate revenue, so if you start taking that revenue away, I think they all want to use something in the area of property taxes. But they're not really sure how we do that and still get enough, and all of their paper will be used here, so, it'll be interesting in the next week, so we'll see how that goes. Uh, a couple things, uh, HB ten ninety three, so that's bond election bill, so they, they put, um, HB ten ninety three started with only being able to have bond elections on. So they, they put, um, HB ten ninety three started with only being able to have bond elections on two dates in the school year, which was the, uh, primary election and then the main election in November. Um, they did get a third date added in now, so now you can do it three dates. It did pass. It's on the governor's desk. There really was hamstring schools that didn't want to pass upon because we all know that time of year matters when you do that and what the interests are moving. Because something like, well, fifty three days in between bond votes, you need to do the second one. So it just, it's not a great bill for schools, but it is what it is, so we'll see what happens. Um, the only, the only update I really have is, uh, central two oh eight was to require a sixty percent vote on all, uh, capital with certificates, cop files. Um, any type of, any type of vote that, or that garn, that allowed us to garnish dollars. Uh, that failed very closely. Um, and then was brought back and failed again, so that's, that's gone. And that's, that was a bad bill. That, that hurt too. So that means the current law is we, we can, as a school board, um, use up to one and a half percent of evaluation in certificates and it's not referable to a vote. That's our decision, it's local dollars. We, we have fiscal management that can be responsible for that. This would require a sixty percent. You have to go to a vote and it has to pass by sixty percent, I think. So that's a, we hope we're not seeing that one. Anyway, those are kind of, those are the big, the big ones. The rest is crazy stuff. Um, I didn't, didn't pass through. The library bill is still there, the library bill. I'll try to follow on that one. Um, it's, the number on that is hmm, twelve thirty nine, HB twelve thirty nine. Uh, we went to a crack trial a week ago. Uh, or two Saturdays ago, there was about sixty people there and I live at forty five, were not happy with that bill. Um, but I'll follow that. Get all people according. So that's kind of what they're looking at. So, um, essentially that bill says librarians could be jailed for students checking out inappropriate material. Whatever people being inappropriate. So it's a bad bill. Uh, passed the committee, is on the floor. This week, we'll see what happens on that.
I just thought right before I came here that I believe they removed the criminal charges. Um, or that.
Sure. You remember, right, we kind of did the same thing here a few years ago. And what was essentially amounted down to was that we had to develop our policies, which we did have. For our memories. So. Um, upcoming meetings and dates, just to remind, March seventeenth, six thirty A M, budget meeting. Uh, March twenty seventh, three thirty P M, negotiations. Um, March thirty first, six to eight P M is the external focus group. And then we will have to have a positive number of negotiations, meeting, uh, probably after that to wrap that up. So that'll probably be, hopefully, before our party meeting. Uh, yeah, last thing I would say is the South Dakota Department of Education Division of Learning and Instruction is going to be visiting our school on April second at ten thirty in the morning. It's part of a three day trip that that division and learning comes, they picked our school, uh, leave Garrettson. I don't remember the third one was, what happened next, maybe? Uh, there, there are directions this year, so they have a kind of a large thing. They've built, they'll tour, they'll work, they'll tour, um, a couple of other things. And they have a question and answer panel, T, another question and answer panel, essential. Um, they visit like one of three schools and we're all, but only being for hours. Really, they just want to come in and out of the school and see what we're doing on the business. We're happy to have them come out. So they'll be short, it's twenty six people. We're going to put the part of that.
You sent some teachers to which school and bring them?
Yeah, yep.
They, how that helped?
Sure. Uh, Lily, you want to, you want to be over there on brand over here?
Sure, yeah. We took our, um, pre-teacher, sixth grade committee over there. But it was super nice to be able to go in and out of the classrooms. The principal was super helpful to work with. And he had it all set up and so did their reading sessions. So we could just kind of hop in and out of the classroom to observe. We asked the all lots of D L A instruction work on and then in public structure. So we will meet this Tuesday, kind of list the pros and cons, the things we saw, the things we got. All this, those are good things, things we thought, you know, maybe not so much for here. So we want to see what looks there that would be good. So we mentioned that school family gear meetings will fit six grade class. So it was great being able to get in there and really see some more things of other things.
Skip, or Skip stands at the intermediate school?
Yes, it is.
Who's the one at the elementary?
Sorry, it was Rick Pearson. If it was, uh, Brett Austin. Yeah, I'm going to be a chairman of the focus. I'm looking at you. Well, yeah, that's it. Great question, though.
I just have one question. Um, not smart on all the bill names, but there was one more kind of hidden voucher bill that had to do with, real estate tax money, that one?
Oh, yeah. Uh, it, it failed. I don't know. Uh, let's see, it's in here. I kind of got earlier ones that failed. Uh, yeah, essentially it was going to allow you as a prop, uh, as a taxpayer to basically say where you're going to send that, where you're going to send that one. I don't remember the number right offhand.
Yeah.
Um, all by a career.
No, you don't have to. I just wanted to hear.
So I tried to clean this up as far as the one I'm being.
And, and we, as a board, made a statement earlier this year about different bills. Do we as a board have any jurisdiction to say anything about the library bill at this point?
Um, I mean, you could certainly come up with a, kind of, instead of supporting our public library. I would just caution to be careful about how, what we, you know, what, what we get. And I didn't know about my culture, so that's directly related, right, related to our finances, but, um, we could certainly put something together, but. Yeah.
The, the librarian bill doesn't affect school librarians, does it?
No.
It's the public library.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought. Those schools librarians are kind of protected under the school umbrella.
So I'll have to see what the updated amendments are. Some of that is kind of, or some of the anybody's against students keeping all, having material that you have. Some people weigh that differently covers and hoping you may get a kind of offensive there in there after school. And they check out a book.
If you want to grab something, I would support it. I mean, it, it struck me as a sneaky first amendment attack, is what it was about. So I keep an eye on those things for sure.
Something to think about, I was just curious. Cause we always could, especially if some reason it passes, we can take a look at what actually passed. Grab something after that. So we actually grab something to draw on this.
Yeah, it might actually seem more.
Yeah. Yeah, good question. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, if nobody has any other questions, Board Donovan, um, we will also entertain board comments, committee reports.
I just want to congratulate our choir members. There was a number of them that went to, uh, Agastana today and they came home with superiors, like I asked all of them, um, awards that they played. So, Mr. Michael's actually really nice job with them. Congrats to all of them.
Well, like I was saying before the board meeting, before you came in, um, our quartet had the best quartet of the day.
Of the day, yes.
So, yeah, so they, yep, and every one of them had superiors in their performances, so we, yeah. I was out there, so it's my good day.
Yeah, yeah.
On a similar note, I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Gall. She brought five of our elementary kids to elementary festival choir a week ago today, I think it was. Um, really cool thing happened all over the state, I think at eight different locations. Um, the kids practiced before school, I think for what, like six weeks? A while for sure, and they brought their music home and practice. Um, and then, uh, Ms. Gall was the director of the Canton location. So she managed all that and taught the fourth graders how to use your recorder at the same time, which is pretty darn impressive. Uh, so just, uh, just some first names here, but to Wesley Max, C C Harper, Callie, and Mrs. Gall. Congratulations and thanks for your hard work. So ditto's. I can get you.
Anybody else? Nobody else. Okay, with that, our next meeting will be the fourteenth right here, seven P M. And with that, we need a motion to move into executive session for South Dakota, South Dakota codified law one dash two five dash two, section five.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to move into executive session. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. Motion passes. We are now in executive session.